Daniel.
Time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 30, August 2022 is called order. I'd ask that you would, those in our council chambers, if you have not signed the trip board by the back door, if you do so before you leave. Also, if we at all please put our cell phones on vibrate. We'll call all members. Daniel.
Councilmember. Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markgraf.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster is absent and Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here in our council chambers this evening, those that are joining us by Zoom. And remember, our council meetings are on the YouTube channel, our City of Pelican Rapids YouTube channel, and they're also available for view on Wednesday evenings on Channel 14. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. This Thursday, September 1st, from 10 to 11 AM is Conversations with the Mayor at Historic City Hall. That was moved from Wednesday to Thursday. Also, Thursday, September 1st, 5 PM is the City Trail Plan Open House at the Pelican Rapids High School Fine Arts Auditorium. Monday, September 5th is Labor Day. City offices are closed. Then Tuesday, September 6th is the first day of school in Pelican Rapids throughout most of Minnesota. Tuesday, September 13th, 4:30 PM is our next city council meeting, and we may act to have a public hearing on that same evening at that council meeting. And a reminder, there's a need for volunteers for the 2024 Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Beautification Committee. If you know of anybody or if you are that person, please contact Don or Daniel at City Hall. Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is citizens' comments. Anyone for citizens' comments other than the, if you're here, if it's an agenda item, we'll wait till the agenda item.
No, I didn't. Judy Tavitt, I just want to make sure that you're trying to include, I thank you, Kevin, for asking about the economic development person. I think that is very important to keep in the budget. There are so many grants that are available to cities that others cannot get that we need that person to do economic development and grant writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else for citizens' comment? Anyone else? Seeing none. Move on to item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda. I have one deletion. Item number five, please delete item number five, library report. Delete item number five, library report. Any additions or other deletions?
I move to approve the agenda with number five deleted.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number 4A is approval of the council minutes from August 16th, 2022. 4B is approval accounts payable listing. 4C1 is staff report, utilities report. 4C2 is a liquor store report, and those are in your packets. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Then we'll move on to item number six is Pelican Pete Project Bids and Awards, and we have Wes Keller here from Houston Engineering. And there was also a bid tabulation sheet which was in your council package. Do you review. Wes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thanks for having me. My name is Wes Keller with Houston Engineering. Just here tonight to go over the bid results for the Pelican Pete Relocation Project. We opened bids last Monday, August 22nd. We received two bid packages for the project, one of which did not meet all the bidding requirements. They did not have a bid bond included with their bid. The other was from ICS Incorporated out of Grand Forks, North Dakota, with a total bid amount of $73,000 even. I will mention our engineering estimate was at $109,000 even. Over the week, last week, we reviewed that bid package, confirmed that it meets all requirements. We provided a copy of that package to the DNR for their review as well. And I also reached out to ICS and had a conversation with them about the project requirements. Just kind of reiterated the requirements, you know, with Pelican Pete, the relocation. With that, you know, I feel comfortable, you know, their understanding of the project. So with that, I'd like to recommend for consideration of the council to approve the bid from ICS for a total of $73,000 even. With that, I can take any questions you may have.
What questions, Councilman Strand?
Are we moving it to a location for repair and then back to the river or what?
Yes, so we would be relocating it this fall before any of the dam removal project begins for the sole purpose of getting it out of the way and making sure, you know, that there is no damage occurring to it. Within that time, it'll be at a temporary storage location identified in the plans. And throughout that time, you know, that will provide an opportunity for the city to make any repairs that they would like to make to the condition of Pete as he is now. And then as part of the dam removal project, we will include an item in there that will take him from the temporary storage location and incorporate him into a permanent foundation, which will be part of that contract.
Similar to the way it is now, the foundations?
Yes, so it is planned to be a concrete slab. Right now, it's planned to be on the other side of the river. It would be at a high elevation, but yes, a similar layout. It would be a concrete slab with a railing around it, kind of overlooking the rapids.
Do you know where we're storing it?
I don't. It's, I believe.
They're storing it on the lot owned by Hovland's or Evensons, right across from the Catholic Church. We talked to them and they said, you're fine to put him there.
Just east of Jamie Stromberg's.
Kind of the reason for that was because of Pete's condition and everything. It was, we wanted to try and find a location that was as close as possible to, so we didn't have to move him a long distance. And so that kind of worked out to be a perfect location to get him tucked back on the back of that. And I believe there's going to be a chain link fence or something around him, protecting him from anybody messing with him, that type of thing, so.
As a part of this contract, there is a chain link fence bid item that will be placed. It will be required to install a chain link fence around him for the temporary storage time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Wes?
As, since this is part of the, I mean, the DNR would be doing this anyway, is this reimbursed by the DNR or not?
This, yeah, the $73,000, the city obviously will pay the bill on it and then we'll turn around and submit a reimbursement from the DNR. But that, this does not cover the repairs. And so while he's on that location, we, the city, have to figure out the repairs and get the repairs done.
I thought we had talked about waiting until he was moved back to his permanent location after, I mean, at the end of the project, when he was moved back to the new slab and then repairing him?
Is that what? Is that an option?
That is an option. I think there is some risk with that option and the simple fact that, you know, you're going to have another contractor moving him while he's in a more fragile condition, as he is now. I think if you would do any sort of repairs offsite, you know, at least at that point, he's going to be, you know, in a better condition for any moving.
So this bid only covers the first removal, not taking him back?
Yes.
So then there'll be another bid to have him taken back?
That will be part incorporated into the dam removal and the permanent foundation. That's all going to be in one contract, yes. And the, and I guess the thought process behind that is, you know, we, at this point, it's unknown when everything would be done with that dam removal project and everything to a point where that contractor could move him and put him on his permanent foundation. So rather than have two contracts open and, you know, one contractor waiting on another, the thought was to just incorporate that in the dam removal project.
Don, that's what.
I have one other question then. So if we've got, the city has the option of repairing him when he's on his temporary site or doing the repairs when he gets back to his new home. Is there any idea if we decide to repair him offsite, what kind of timeframe we have before he, you know, so at some point, he's going to have to be done to be ready to go to not hold things up to go to his new site? Any idea at this point in the bidding documents for the removal of the dam and getting Pete back over, when that might be?
So right now, the, you know, as, as we sit with the dam removal project, the hope is to bid that project this, late this fall, early winter, to provide a time in the winter during freeze up for a lot of the heavy hauling to occur, you know, for all the dredge work and any removal of any of the embankment done this winter. That would put us into a spring timeline for installing the bridge and any of that concrete work into that, into summer. So, you know, working it backwards from there, I would anticipate a early to midsummer would be kind of best case scenario when everything would be kind of finished up and installing Pete would be one of the last things I would envision.
He mentioned the bridge, and I know, you know, we kind of did get that grant on the bridge, and right now, we're just waiting for the state contract to come back, signs of the council, and I'm hoping they'll, I'm hoping they'll send us a version signed as opposed to, it's possible they might just send us an unsigned version of the complete contract with the state on the bridge to have the city council sign and then send it back to them. But there's the possibility in speaking to them, and as slow as the state's working these days, that we might not get a signed contract back from the state until after the New Year. And we can't incur any costs prior to that at this point. So it's going to be very interesting to see the logistics and the timing of a bridge because if we can't even order a bridge until we get that contract in place, and so we put the order in after the New Year, who knows when we're going to get a steel bridge? So the state's kind of putting us in a little bit of a pickle, but.
And I guess one thing with that would be, you know, if, if it were, there's kind of two directions you could go with that, you know, if the city were to order the bridge themselves, or if you put that, you know, into the contract for the contractor to work with a supplier and provide that bridge, which that would be, you know, a later timeframe that might, that might help in that situation.
We'll have to talk about that.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions regarding this bid proposal? For Wes?
I'm down this, I mean, this is what we have to do, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
When I scanned the packet, I, I thought it was like both ways. So I move to accept. I can't see it. The guy's from Grand Forks.
ICS.
ICS.
ICS. ICS. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
One last question. So Houston Engineering submit a letter, a notice of award, or do we need to provide something, ICS letting them know it's been?
Yes, we'll have the, the city would have to provide, the documents are in the bid pack, or in the contract documents. I can work with you to get those signed, and then we'll have to provide them to ICS.
Okay. Now, I'm sorry, I checked out for a second, but did, did you say when this was going to, when they were going to start this or do this?
So we have in there the, we have two completion dates, a moving completion date of October 14th and a substantial completion, I'll clean up everything like that, October 28th, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is Planning Commission Report. We have John Waller here this evening, and the reason this is on our agenda, later on this, this evening on the agenda, we'll be talking about the possible sale of City Hall to Verton Funeral Home or Larson Funeral Home, but before we could even consider that, this had to go through the Planning Commission. There was a handout on your desk this evening, it wasn't a packet, it was on your desk, and John's going to keep it there. John?
So the, last night, the Planning Commission met, and we came up with six different aspects of why this would fit the plan, the comprehensive plan, the current 2022 comprehensive plan. Because the first one is in Chapter 7 on page 35, it states that economic development seeks to strengthen a community through the expansion of its tax and employment base. As a planning commission, we see the sale of the city hall would take it from a city owned, which has no tax revenue, to a privately owned, which has tax revenue. This would increase our tax base to the city. As the planning commission looked at Section 2 land use, we see that the sale would take the existing funeral home from a residential area of town and move it to the commercial section of town. And as we learned last night, it would have to remain residential, the new owner would have to have it unless they went for a special use permit, so we wouldn't have all this spot zoning in town or spot businesses here and there. Number three, as the planning commission looked at Section 3 Housing and Planning Commission, saw that the sale would allow the current funeral home to potentially be turned into housing of some kind that currently is needed within the city. Number four, as the planning commission looked at Chapter 9 Community Service and Infrastructure, the planning commission sees that the sale of the current city hall building to Larson Funeral Home or Verton would still allow the city to maintain their current city hall and police department location while potentially cutting down on maintenance and upkeep costs to the city. Number five, as the planning commission goes back to Chapter 7 Economic Development, the planning commission sees that the expansion of the current funeral home, as any business that expands, there would be potential for more employment because of the sale of the city hall to Larson Funeral Home or Verton. And number six, also in Chapter 7, we need to rethink vacant space, adaptive space. Adaptive reuse can help the city fill vacant spaces that will support new and existing businesses to start or in this case, expand. As the planning commission does a complete overview of our findings, we see that the sale of the current Pelican Rapids City Hall to Larson Funeral Home or Verton would be completely within the scope of the 2022 comprehensive plans. Any question?
Any questions for John? At this point, they have done their due diligence to present this to us, so this gone through the planning commission. What we decide to do in the future, that, that's a different conversation, but. So I guess we're looking at a motion to accept the planning commission.
As we looked at this, it was not all or part of the building, it was just a sale of some sort.
So move. Motion to accept Planning Commission Report on the second?
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
The next item is also a planning commission item. Item number eight is Iggy Watt Split Request, and there was a diagram which was in your council packet, and there was also an application to request to the planning commission, which was handed out this evening on your desk. And Don, do you want to address this?
Yeah, basically.
John can answer any questions?
Yeah, an application was submitted requesting a lot split by Dottie Iggy. On the screen is the property that was, that was referenced over on 8th Street. They did a legal description and split off one acre surrounding the house in order to sell it. And in order to do a lot split, before it comes to the city council, the planning commission considers lot split requests also, and so the planning commission reviewed that last night and approved the lot split application. Thus, it comes to the city council for the city council to take a look at it, review the planning commissions, or the application, making sure the planning commission reviewed that, and then council can approve it and I based on any questions or comments. Anything else on that, John?
Anything else, John?
I move to approve the application for request to split the lot that the planning commission already approved.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. And John, don't run away because I've got a couple more items regarding the chamber I think drew the chamber president, I'd like to address. Let's go down to item number 12. It's a 2023 Red River Valley Home and Garden Show Consideration, and that was in our packet. Danielle, do you want to talk to this because you're the one that gets this information?
Sure, well, it is that time of year again to make the decision if we're going to be in the Red River Valley Fair, the Red River Valley Home and Garden Show, and the sheet that I included in the packet has the price on it. So if we did the early bird, I know it's hard to see and I can't even see it right now, but it's in, it's the end of February, and if we decide now, we get the early bird special of Renato members, the 870. I'll just need you guys to either decide that we're going to do it or not do it this year.
I know at the end of the Home and Garden Show last year, there was debate on, amongst some of the volunteers, if we should do this again or just scrap the idea. And John, I know John had reached out last year to volunteer.
I sent out several emails to all the chamber members and got no response, and I'm having trouble finding people who even want to be on the chamber board or even help volunteer to run Pelican Fest. So something that's not even in town is almost impossible, even though it is a good thing.
Oh, definitely, it is good, but we don't have the work.
But if you don't have the manpower. I know the mayor was there for a few shifts.
Lou has spent a lot of time there.
Lou lived there.
Couple years.
Do you have any comments on that?
I, it's just too hard to get people together.
I know, there was. There was two or, at least two or three people from Merchants on the Move that participated. So what's the council's wishes?
There is no interest. I don't suppose we should spend the 850. I mean, if there are no volunteers, there doesn't seem anybody cares enough about it to volunteer or has the time, I shouldn't.
Danielle, if we decide not to do this, do we have to take any action or just?
No.
We don't have to make a motion?
No.
So they mean is the event on a whole? I mean, do a lot of people go to the Dome for that? I only worked it overnight.
It's well attended. Very well attended. I don't know what that computes to is what kind of revenue it drives for the city. I don't know if there's any way to measure that.
There really is a way you could figure out because they saw us there, they gave the Pelican.
We're only one of three cities in the area that participate. Barnesville is there, then there's a city out in North Dakota, otherwise, there's only three cities that are represented as cities. It's, it, it's good PR work, but. And we were one of the three? Yes, yes. So I guess if we're going to have a motion, we're going to have, need a motion to go ahead and participate in the Red River Valley Home and Garden Show of 2023. Otherwise, if we do not have a motion, it'll just die for lack of interest.
Can I ask a question, Brent?
Yes. Could you, could you address the microphones so they could hear you at home?
Last weekend in February.
When do you have to have the deadline in? The Merchants on the Move meet on Wednesday mornings, so I guess I wouldn't mind finding out from.
September 16th, early registration.
Yeah. Okay. I can mention at the Merchants on the Move meeting.
So we could.
What's the late registration?
December 1st. Our regular registration is December 1st.
How much is it?
Is it still any 70?
It's got to be more.
I think it's a thousand.
Thousand, ten.
It's a lot more.
Thousand plus, yeah. Thousand, ten.
I will mention it in the morning at the Merchants on the Move meeting and get back to you.
Well, we could, we could address it again at the next city council meeting.
Yes, I can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we could do that. It would still be within that timeline.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Judy. Okay, so I guess we'll move on from that item. Let's go down to item number, or go up to item number 11, Chamber of Commerce's update on Oktoberfest. We have Panya Stahl here this evening, I think Justin Fury is also here. There was an email that was put on your desk. Panya.
So my name's Panya Stahl, I'm with the Chamber of Commerce Pelican Rapids Oktoberfest Committee. It's our 25th year in business, I guess, or as a committee. For anybody that doesn't know, our goal is to support community beautification projects that make our local communities attractive and inviting to locals and summer populations, and then anybody that passes through on Highway 59. In the past, we made generous donations towards like maintenance of the fountain, we used to have that, local or yearly contributions to the Chamber of Commerce. Currently, purchase flowers for downtown on a yearly basis, or I think our last donation was $2,000. And then through, I went through some old minutes this afternoon, but we've been supporting projects for the park boards, City of Pelican Rapids and Air Hard, Pelican Schools, or some other bigger projects. I think I went back to like at least 2010 or so, so just some examples of things that we've been doing. Currently, we're making efforts to be more visible throughout the year in the community. So that's one of the reasons we're here today. And then just to bring. And then just to bring the council up to date on, or our committee up to date with current technology. So we have a lot of younger members who are trying, I shouldn't say a lot of young members, but we have some younger members who are trying to bring things up to date with just like, say, for example, talking about electronic payment for our auction, for example. However, we do need to spread the word that we, that without dedicated committee members, we can't continue. Right now, we have three committee members that are there on a regular basis, and it's our secretary, myself as chairman, and our treasurer. Some of the founding committee members have retired in the last couple of years, and they're the ones that started the group, have really committed to that over time. But we're kind of struggling in the area of finding new members, younger members, people that are willing to commit the time to meetings and then putting in the work for all the activities we do. So we're just kind of asking to spread the word about that. We have been able to partner with Merchants on the Move, for example, just to spread some of the workload on their taking over the Stop and Shop they started, I think that, was it the year before last, I think? But they have agreed to continue doing that moving forward so that our shrinking group can continue to do some of these activities. Lastly, just raffle tickets and buttons are for sale at downtown businesses. We do have shirts available. It's like this. They're also going to be available September 23rd at the VFW at the Neat Raffle, and October 8th at the Stop and Shop and live auction. And then just to let everybody know that the hunt is on for Mr. and Mrs. Oktoberfest and the medallions starting this Thursday, and for everybody to take note that they want to look for, look on Facebook for the most up-to-date information.
I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for supporting Oktoberfest through all the years, 25 years. That's a long time, and it's exciting to carry on that legacy. And also, thank you guys for, you know, promoting us and, you know, trying to make sure people know about us, you know, as we're trying to unify Pelican Rapids and trying to get sponsorships in order for us to do that. You guys are key players too in that, and when people are asking, hey, how can we, or some projects that we can do, you know, we're there and just want to, you know, contribute to the community.
And thinking of small businesses too, because without them, this really wouldn't happen ever. And they've been pretty awesome at evolving with our changing requests and things that, you know, kind of, that are different year to year based on who's kind of in leadership to stuff.
Yeah, shout out to John Waller. He's our, you know, chamber leader, so thank you, John.
Any questions for Tammy or Justin before they?
Tanya.
Tanya.
Tanya, yes, excuse me. Any questions? Just not a thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go up to item number nine, City Hall Upper Floor Discussion. We have Jade from Larson Funeral Home with us here this evening. I guess, as I see this this evening, we're just general discussion if there's any, we have, we are looking to pass a resolution to have a public hearing on this in our first city council meeting in September, and it's usually good to hear from the public before we make a decision. So what I see, the decision will probably be made that same evening as our next city council meeting. We have Lindsey Forsgren with us here if there's, if there's any question. She's our city attorney. I know Don was going to look in, Don, do you want to address the situation we're looking at the remodeling costs and how that affects the upstairs and the downstairs?
Well, that's, that's one of the things that, that I brought up was looking at when, when the city, I was asked, basically, to begin with, I was asked how much of the bond is still out there on the project that was done to the building? And to take a look, and so the plan is for me to take a look at the remodeling that was done and what components and how much of that remaining bond or that bond was, was kind of tied towards the upper floor versus the lower floor versus, you know, common to the building? And so I haven't had a chance to do that yet with working on the budget and stuff, but the goal is for, to try and see if I can go through the documents and get that information and have that available by the public hearing. But, you know, when I get it together, make sure that the council get it with time to kind of review it and figure out what that all means in the whole discussion.
Council have any questions or discussion this evening?
Yeah, that's why, that's why, you know, basically, one of the reasons that I think Jade is here, just in case, as you guys, you know, have discussed this in that closed meeting and prior discussions, if there was any questions that came up that you wanted to throw out there, if you needed additional information or answer a couple of questions, maybe Jade would be able to answer them if you have any.
Any questions at all? If not, there is a resolution in our packet, resolution number 2022-1, find public hearing on sale of property owned by the city. That was in our packet, and to have this public hearing, we have to pass this resolution so the public can get involved in the discussion. Like before was mentioned by Attorney Forsgren, this is not mandatory with, we do this, but it is beneficial to everybody within the City of Pelican Rapids if they can have their voice heard regarding this matter. I'll move we adopt Resolution 2022-15.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Motion carry. Thank you.
So just to point out, Mayor, that that public meeting or the public hearing then will be on the next council meeting on the 13th at 5:00.
Okay, 5:00. Okay, item number 10 is ordinance providing moratorium in a sale of hemp-derived THC food and beverages, and we did talk about this at our last city council meeting, and we had our city attorney draft an ordinance regarding a moratorium, which we could vote on this evening. As Chief of Police Stateum was here last time, he was in favor of that moratorium. I have talked to County Commissioner Wayne Johnson, and at this point, the county has discussed this, and they know our intentions, that we may pass this moratorium, and the county is also looking to do something countywide, but they have not made a decision yet at this point.
I think I asked this last time, but do we know of other communities that are passing moratoriums like this?
Ah, yeah, there was, there were some listed in an email from staffer from Senator Agnewbretson, Stillwater, Robinsdale, St. Joseph, Marshall, but that was some time ago. They have already adopted moratoriums. There could be more at this point, I don't know, but there are. So we aren't setting any precedent, sir?
And obviously, with setting a moratorium, you guys, it just basically says there can't be any sell of that stuff until you guys decide if you're going to put an ordinance in place or not. You could, after a couple of meetings or considerations about it, you may decide you're not even going to bother with an ordinance and just lift the moratorium and let life go on.
So we're not bound to the year that's listed in that moratorium?
No, no, you, basically, for, you can have it for a period of one year, and you can extend it, but in order to extend it, you've got, without getting into potential any issues, you'd have to show that you've been working on it, and you just need more time to finish up on it. But any time between the day this is published, you know, going up to one year, you could lift the moratorium and be done with it or pass an ordinance or whatever at any time.
Who was driving this request? Do we know who was driving the request?
I brought it forward because of the discussion, and there was a lot of unknowns. This was in the 2018 Farm Bill. They just threw this out there, and the legislature didn't even know, and a lot of them still don't know what it includes.
Yeah, I think it was actually the League of Minnesota Cities that pointed it out to all the communities that, that, like Brent said, this was passed, but when the legislature passed it, it was one of those things, let's just pass it, then we'll figure out what's in it. And when they found out what was in it, it drew concerns. And so that's why the league, you know, kind of said, let's, let's let cities know that, you know, they should maybe think about this before they just, and give the cities a chance to think and maybe put an ordinance in place governing what their, them cities want to do.
We're just, we're just saying we're not for, I guess, that we're just, give us some time to sort it out, right?
Yes, correct.
So I move to adopt Ordinance 2022-1.
I'll second then. Yeah, we have a motion and second. Discussion? Discussion? What's been the results of these other cities that have passed it? Have we heard any, have anybody heard anything about them?
I know that, and I'm not sure which city, but I know that, probably more of them, but I was reading somewhere that one, in fact, I think I might have provided the city attorney or Danielle already with the, I don't know if it was a draft or if it was an actual ordinance that a city did put in place. So they already had kind of done their due diligence and already passed an ordinance or had a draft to consider. So I had found one, but I didn't do a whole lot digging, I found one because I thought if you guys decided to do a moratorium, the next thing is to look at potentially an ordinance, so I wanted to get something for us to kind of use as a, kind of a template. I'm sure there are cities out there that have already done ordinances or looked at it, maybe didn't, but I don't know.
Does the league have a template at this point or not?
I don't know. It's something that'll have, if you, if you put the moratorium in place, that's one of the things that'll just have to be figured out.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Has our attorney had any chance to look at it?
She's the one that drafted this ordinance.
Well, have you looked into it? Lindsey? At all or? Have you, have you looked into what the other cities have done or?
As far as regulating the sale of, no. All I've done so far is put the ordinance in place that puts the moratorium in place, which just gives the council a little flexibility to regulate until there are more knowns in place.
Okay.
Are, are there any knowns that of cities that did not create a moratorium? Is there like THC food and beverages derived from hemp running wild? Is it, I mean, is this just, this is, this is new to me? And it is a farm option. I assume that's why it was in the farm bill.
I don't know. I know that there are THC food and beverages being sold. I think I saw some at Larry's, actually.
And Minnesota currently has a minimum THC level in place, correct?
Correct, yes.
As a state?
Minimum or maximum?
Maximum, maximum. Which is minimal, I understand. I've never taken.
I'm not sure. I've not looked into the THC stuff at all.
I just, I feel like, I feel like somebody threw up the big bad boogeyman and everybody's going to panic over it, and we don't have a reason to at this point. I mean, the motion's been made, that's perfectly fine.
Well, this was part of the farm bill. There was no age limit, then the state had, they put a minimum age of 21 before anyone could buy it.
Mayor, I think, I think the purpose of this is, like everybody else, is to be proactive instead of reactive, because if issues do come up throughout the state or in other locations, and then to go back and have to fix something because we weren't proactive, we got to be reactive. I think that's what they're trying to just accomplish, give it, give the cities a chance to, to take some, a little bit of time to figure it out and then decide what they want to do with it. Nothing or something.
And the flexibility is there, so that if you decide you want to, you know, in a month or two repeal this, if you've got an ordinance ready to go, or you decide that it's regulated enough by the state that you don't need to take any more specific regulation, this gives you the power to do that.
Cosmo Strahan?
Lindsey, what, can I buy at Larry's that has?
I didn't, I didn't look, I didn't look closely at it, but at the checkout at number five, I just noticed that there were THC products. I think.
Like, what was it like?
Or I think they're drinks.
Yeah, Steve, I think also the liquor industry too, there's, the liquor stores are potentially selling stuff that have THC products in, you know, that are THC products too. I don't know whether our liquor store has anything at this point, but they're out there.
Okay.
And I certainly did not mean to call out Larry's or anything. I'm just saying I noticed that, I mean, it's already hit the markets, so.
Well, I know Mark had taken some of the stuff off the shelves because he needed.
John, John, microphone please.
I know Mark had taken some of the stuff off the shelf in anticipation of this, just in case. So when it, if it did come through, then he wouldn't have some of that stuff on the shelf, but it's, the stuff we, I think the stuff we have is the stuff we've been selling for years, whatever, whatever that CBD stuff I think it is.
Which traditionally doesn't have THC except for certain situations.
Yeah.
And to be clear, this also applies, this would also apply to the city liquor store, so.
Yes.
We're not. Brent, just, if you guys decide to put the ordinance or the moratorium in place, I think you should kind of have some idea of the next step. You know, what do you want to start looking at? What do you want to have the city attorney start looking at so that we can keep this going? If there's a moratorium in place, maybe there's something you can decide over just a month or two and just be done with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Has the state come out with any restrictions or guidance or anything?
It's pretty vague, because some of our elected officials and their peers, they, they don't have the answers. It's vague at this point.
You mean they don't know what they're doing?
That's why the League of Minnesota Cities said cities should take a look at this and pay attention to this, because the legislature wasn't real clear on what they were trying to accomplish.
Didn't you say they raised the age limit?
21.
Yeah, and the state did that.
And put a maximum, or maximum level of THC, I think. But I guess if it, I don't even know if this is possible, but I would be interested in learning, or maybe you could direct me to do my own research, where a person could find out in states that this has been well ahead of us, which Minnesota is generally never cutting edge. So I'd like to know economic impact, medically impact. I mean, you hear a lot in the media about whatever it was John said earlier, and THC, and in pain relieving, that, things like that. I'm interested to know that end of it, not just shutting something down because we're afraid of it, not that we're shutting it down, I understand we're not, but that was my concern initially, it's no longer my concern.
I believe I heard on the radio that Fergus Falls actually has a shop that sells the stuff, or opened a new shop recently. So that might be one of your steps to go.
John, what, you mentioned Larry's, now what, is it a certain drink or flavor? I don't get it.
They have drinks, drinks have, like, energy drinks have some of that stuff in there. You know, they come up with all these.
It comes in oils too, correct?
What's that?
Oils?
Yeah.
Where you rub on your body, you know?
CBD, well, does THC also?
I don't know. This specifically is. This, this specifically is, is directed to our THC food and beverages.
Not CBD, because CBD can also be infused with THC.
Well, if the CBD has THC also, I, I mean, if it's an edible food or a beverage, then it would apply. But if it's a CBD THC type product, that's.
Or gummies.
Not for consumption. It doesn't apply.
That's what I heard. Governor Walz approved gummies in sales in the state of Minnesota. That's where I've heard of this.
That, that falls under it.
Yeah.
The THC type products.
I think Justin has it called it.
So I followed this just a little bit. So going back ten years or so, um, remember when Colorado passed marijuana was legalized? They didn't realize until afterwards what the effects on driving, um, everything else was with marijuana. So they actually passed the law, Califor, or Colorado passed the law before they knew what the actual effects were. So the State Patrol and all these agencies, law enforcement agencies, trying to keep their own safe, had to all of a sudden do all these studies. And so I remember there was a news report where a reporter, you know, drove sober on a course and then ended up, you know, smoking one and then two and three and the effects. Um, as far as THC, THC is what makes that high sense in your body. So CBD has been legal, legalized, and THC now has been kind of coming on the scene. Um, and so, in, in my opinion, I think THC might be on the same page where these politicians are wanting to be, cutting edge and accepting of everything. Um, and so making it legal. And I think, I think it makes sense to pass a motion like this because of you guys are saying, hey, there's, there might be something, we need to proceed with caution, let's, you know, pass something and from the last council meeting, it sounded like this was Larry saying, hey, let's do some investigating and then figure it out from there. And that, it sounds like exactly what you guys are doing right now and we're doing kind of all together, like, hey, what, what are the effects? And what's the economic and what's the, everything, you know, social implication and all that stuff? And it seems like that would be a good comprehensive study. And somewhere, I'm sure, has done something about it. But I just wanted to, to just communicate that sort of stuff, but also just say that it makes sense, you know, you guys passing something saying, hey, let's figure it out and then, you know, pass something more permanently or, or undo it or whatever. Just want to say that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carry not all in favor of passing ordinance number two zero two-two eight after zero one, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Thank you. Put on to item number thirteen, general budget review. Uh, at this point, uh, Councilman Foster and Administrator Sogen, I've, we've had, I don't know, three or four different budget meetings. We met with the department heads and there is a proposed budget, a twenty-twenty-three general budget before you this evening. And, uh, we are not looking to pass this budget this evening, but, you know, discuss it and hopefully pass it at our next city council on the fourteenth of September or the first council meeting of September.
Thirteen.
So Don, I'll let you take it away.
Now the meeting begins. No, uh, the, I set a new budget, there was one in the packets and I set one in front of you guys. It changed a little bit from the one that was in the packet because one of the things that I was waiting for, um, was some lease information on some equipment that we need. And so I got that information, updated the budgets. And so what I plan to do is, uh, go through each department and I'll do it rather quickly. And then after I go through the budget as a whole and kind of skim through things, I'm going to come back to certain departments because that's where the majority, I think, of the discussion's going to have to end up. So as you can see, I'm going to start on the revenue side. As you can see, uh, on your handout, not the screen, um, uh, the highlighted yellow zero basically, um, is, is kind of, so that if we make any changes, I could make a change and you guys would, uh, be able to see the, the immediate impact of that change based in our, during our discussion. As a matter of fact, I'm going to switch over to this version of it because it's an Excel spreadsheet. So if we change anything, and this reflects the one that's in front of you, not the one that was in the packet. So if we change any of these numbers, you'll immediately be able to see how it affects, um, the increase in the levy, which is the hundred and sixty thousand, is really the increase from over last year. Okay? And then, uh, this one million twelve thousand three sixteen, that's the number that actually is going to go in this yellow box to balance the budget. So I'm just kind of keeping it out of the, the spreadsheet for now. But as we change numbers, as we're talking, you want to see the change on something? I can make a change, these numbers are automatically changed. The eighteen point, uh, point eight-four percent is what this budget's levy increase would have to be as it sets right now. So obviously there's discussion and we want to get that number down as low as possible. So with that.
Can I add something here?
Sure.
The Budget Committee, when we looked at this, we decided there were certain things in here that probably the whole council should talk about. And so we left some of those things in there with the assumption that we would talk about them, probably cut them, maybe not, but we wanted this to be a whole council decision rather than just a budget. So that's why it's eighteen percent. We realized it's a pretty hefty increase. We didn't want to do that again, but we left these, these things in for discussion, so.
Thank you. Very good point. Thank you. So going through the revenue side of things, um, pretty much, uh, for the most part, everything kind of stays flat. Uh, local government aid, we do get an increase from the state on that, but that increase is only ten thousand dollars. Uh, if they would go into a special session, which include, would include not only a bonding bill, but maybe a tax bill because they talked about that during the special section, then that number could possibly change. But right now, what we know is it's ten thousand dollars or a one percent increase. Um, the rest of the numbers, like I said, pretty much stay relatively the same. The liquor store, we're figuring a one thousand dollar, a one hundred thousand dollar transfer of liquor store profits into the general fund like we have the last couple of years for the sole purpose of buying down the levy. That's why we're doing it, it's not coming over for any specific reason. With, at this point, where, where the discussion is right now, that might change, but. Okay, so then going through, starting with the council and the mayor, um, items, no change. Everything's pretty much the same. There might be some minor changes in all this and I'm not going to touch on those. If, if a budget's going up a couple hundred bucks or a thousand bucks in, in a particular category or department, I'm not going to, you know, talk about that detail too much. So you guys, you know, between now and the next meeting, if you have questions on specific areas, you can get ahold of me or ask the question.
John, do you have a question?
Well, I have a comment. Have you guys taken into consideration that property values? I know like mine and everybody else I've talked to, the state has raised our property values quite a lot. So that would generally increase your revenue that you'd be getting. Cause mine went up about twenty-five thousand in one year. So my taxes went up quite a bit for next, proposed taxes anyway for next year went up. So I'm sure everybody else did, so the city would have more money to work with in that case.
Thank you. Don?
So, um, looking at the administrator department, uh, in this one, again, all the, all the different departments, there has been an adjustment for cost of living adjustment, um, kind of figured into it. And, uh, and then, um, for, for the city administrator, the one, the one item here that I'll, I'll just talk on is this eighty-five, which employer contribution amount for retirement. Typically, that's only the, uh, six point, or seven point five percent of the PERA that the city has to pay. But in this particular case, because I'm retiring, there's a one-time, uh, forty-five hundred dollars that has to be added, that gets put into the state's, Minnesota state retirement system for health, uh, health care savings plan, based on the amount of sick leave that I did not use while I was here for eighteen years. So that's just a one-time thing and then it drops back down. Uh, the only other thing in this area is a new laptop that's needed. And actually, you'll see that I got a new laptop figured in, the city clerk does. And also there was one that we had to purchase for the fire department. And them have already been purchased, so we're basically just paying the, the, uh, paying for them in the twenty-twenty-three. And the reason for those are Danielle's, the one that she was using, was dying. And, um, uh, and, and mine was purchased the same time hers was. So we just figured we better get, we better get them now. Otherwise she'll be typing or writing on paper, so. So then have already been replaced, we bought them through Lake County Service Co-op. Um, and they were about fifteen hundred bucks apiece, so. And then this next category is the Economic Development Director. This is in the budget because, um, uh, it's one of the discussions that's got to happen during this budget cycle is, is, uh, you know, do we bring that position in, in, uh, do we hire it or what do we do? But we just wanted to show the budget with it in there so you can kind of see the effect of the budget. And that'll be the one of the big questions coming out of all this discussion, discussion tonight and next council is, um, do we move forward or what, what do we do? The city clerk, her budget, very similar. Basically, there was a little bit of an increase, uh, in education and then the capital with the new computer. Elections are zero because we don't have any elections in twenty-twenty-three. Usually we just put a number in there during election years. Recording, reporting, that's the money we pay the press and office supplies, that type of thing. That's, does not change. There's, um, let's see, accounting, not much change there. I'm not going to touch on anything there. Auditing, the auditing number stays the same. In legal, I did drop employee relations down by eight thousand dollars. The reason that was as high as it was is because we were paying out of, we were used, um, it was planned to pay the, uh, legal services for the ex-employee that we've been dealing with out of this, but we decided to make it department-specific. So that's, you'll see that further on down under the police department. And so we'll talk about it then. But I was able to basically, because of that change, um, drop the legal down a little bit. Leaving enough money in here for Lindsey. She's left, okay. Okay. Planning and zoning, no changes to speak of there. Uh, general government buildings, thing there is I, the only difference here is I just dropped the capital, uh, capital out, five thousand dollars. Um, because really last year we had six thousand in to deal with the sprinkler systems of City Hall. And so that's, that was in last year's budget. We don't foresee anything in general government buildings, so for that reason, it was dropped down. Public safety, which is the police department, lots of things here. Overall, you see this budget goes up by about a hundred and fifteen thousand or a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Basically, it's a big increase in wages and salaries because we're trying to hire two full-time officers. If we find them two full-time officers, we want to have it in the budget. Uh, and having said that, I did reduce, kind of offset the wages a little bit, um, uh, with part-time officers, I dropped that down about six thousand dollars just because history shows that our part-timers are, are not used as much, um, because of the ones we have. Typically, they've got other jobs or careers, and actually we're down to one. And so, uh, we get very limited service from, from that person, but, uh, employer retirement contribution, you see that I dropped down by thirteen thousand. And what I did was I, I took and made it more accurate, reflecting actual history. Now, granted, if we hire two full-time officers, that number's probably going to, is going to go up in twenty-twenty-four, but I decided this year, we need, the budget needs the relief. So let's bring it down if we're not going to spend it for that, for that particular issue or item, then let's just bring it down. Like I said, though, if we hire two more, there, it's, it's going to be somewhere between the seventy and probably eighty-three thousand. And then this professional services, um, the three hundred, that went from thirty-five hundred normally to seventy thousand. That's a huge jump. That's where we're basically come, we're going to be covering the expense of the ex-employee that we're dealing with, the ex-police officer. So, uh, that's legal fees, court fees, all that type of stuff that you guys are aware of, so. And then in the, uh, police department capital, we're looking at, uh, uh, starting a three-year lease on a vehicle. Jeff needs two more radios. We did buy two radios in two, twenty-two and the, the plan was to buy a couple in twenty-twenty-two, a couple more in twenty-twenty-three. And then also he wants to swap from the Glock forty, uh, forty caliber handguns. He wants to kind of get away from them and go to a nine millimeter, uh, all six of them that they have, or buy six nine millimeters at this point. And with the trade-ins and everything else, it's pretty minimal cost, it's less than thirteen hundred bucks. And so he asked if we could, if the council would consider that. So then, uh, let's see, public safety, which is fire, civil defense and animal control, pretty much all stayed flat. Streets and highways. Streets and, yeah, streets and roads, I guess. Pretty much, professional services, I dropped ten thousand dollars, uh, because we had been, uh, we had ten thousand dollars planned in there for engineering and work to be done at the end of Third Street and then extension. But I have been, not been able to get the property owner over there to, to really budge on things too much. And so because we budgeted it last year, um, and, and it was in the levy, there was no reason to have it in there again. I can, we, the city can continue to try and, and acquire that land along the west line of West Central Turkey so that we can develop that street over there. But there's no reason to continually ask for the budget to cover that engineering. So we've got some money, uh, if, if we ever get to that point, um, where we've got something that we need to, uh, do, it would just be already in the general fund. And then in the street department, this, this note, the note box over here's got a lot of stuff to it. Load up a little bit more. So the, the Budget Committee and looking at a few things that the street department was asking for, and it kind of made sense through their discussion, uh, to fund these things up on the top. And one of them is a tire-changing machine for a couple thousand dollars. And with the number of tires that they end up dealing with, it's basically so it can handle, maybe not vehicle or vehicles, but also more importantly, our lawnmowers, because they're, are riders. Uh, there's a number of times that they end up with flat tires and they have to basically run out and get a, uh, uh, you know, get the equipment, bring it back in, take the tired OK tire, wait for OK tire to, or, or, uh, whichever place they take it to, uh, wait for it to get done again so they can get back and get, and get using it again. And with their, with their own machine, um, they'd be, their downtime would be much, much, much less. Plus, you know, you don't have the cost of them tire repairs and all that stuff too. Uh, they need new tires for number seventeen. And don't ask me what number seventeen is, I forgot. But, uh, then blade attachment for the skid steer and then three more cameras for the public works building. And then the big, the big one on this one, which drove the, the level of it up, is money for a new salt and sand storage shed, which is, we've already kind of priced out. It's eighty. It's $85,000. And with the, with the county doing away with, or the state doing away with their, their facility out there, they tore it down. And as we understand it, MPCA does not want sand and salt, does not allow sand and salt to be sitting outside in the elements anymore. It's got to be protected. And so we need to put something up to do that. Originally, it was thought, when we were looking at potentially, one of the things we were looking at when we were looking at the bowling alley was, is that a potential site that we'd be able to, in the back part of that thing, store? But obviously, that's, it turned out that's too nice a building to, to use in that way. And, and we don't know the state of that anyway, so it's unlikely that, that the city would ever get that. And if, if there ever was a chance, it wouldn't be for public works, storage stuff. The, the other building that we have next to the new building, the concept-looking building, is just, is there's too much stuff in there. If you put sand and salt in there, where are you going to put all the stuff that's in there? The Christmas lights and all the other things that are in there. So there needs to be another facility. And there's not, and whether we took this thing, the size that Brian needs, I don't know that it would fit in the back of the, of the location we have now. It's possible if that's what we have to do. But anyway, so there's $85,000 for that. Other things that they asked for, that's kind of other considerations that haven't, wasn't decided on for sure by, to propose by the, by the Budget Committee, was replacing the skid steer, another F-250, and to replace one of the F-250s now. The one that does most of the plowing is going to, is need, based on the replacement schedule, one of them's need to be swapped, needs to be swapped out. And then number 10 is our, is our 2003 plow truck that we use in the wintertime. The dump box on that thing is really getting rusted out, and it needs to be replaced. And that dump box is 20,500 bucks. And then also, Brian said at some point, that, that roof on that old shop building's going to have to be replaced, and we estimate that at $25,000. So, so the other things to be considered that hadn't been decided on yet, they're all high-ticket items. You do see that under, replacing the Bobcat, it's $55,000 is the quote we got. We can lease it for six payments, lease payments at $9,800 if we don't want to buy it outright. And for the F-250 also, we got a quote for 44,000, which we could also put under a lease for six payments of 8,000. So it's just additional information for you there. And then a couple of things, too, that we said no in 2023 for the street department was, every year, we put, we put $15,000 into what we call Equipment Fund. And if something happens, then Brian basically would use that to buy it. Or if nothing happens, we take what's not used and we put it into a savings account for when we have to buy equipment. We decided if, because of the other things that are basically requested and being considered up here, that we weren't going to consider that stuff and fund the Equipment Fund. So we said no to the Equipment Fund. Brian also was asking for, to get under kind of a, a program where every year, we budget 20,000 to 30,000 for lease programs. So, so instead of, you know, picking out leases for a Bobcat or a, or an F-250, we would just continually have something that we'd be leasing new equipment and just keep rotating and putting 20 to 30 grand in there and leasing new equipment as we need it. And we said, we're not even going to go there this year because of all the other things that the budget has in it and because of some of the requests that he's already got that we, we feel were higher priority and stuff that need to be considered. Okay? Street maintenance, there was not much of a difference in. Let's see, snow and ice removal, storm drains, street lighting, weed control, that all stayed relatively flat. Swimming pool stayed, well, didn't stay relatively flat. And the, the only big change in swimming pool was wages. And what I did, I did drop it down by $7,000 because it's, it's, going back and looking at the history of the pool, it seemed like we're more apt to be at $25,000 than 33 because of staffing, because of, you know, amount the pools open, that type of thing. And so I was, I thought, it makes sense to drop it down. Now granted, if we get a new pool, that all changes, but we don't see that happening in 2023 at this point, if there's no bonding bill. Skating rinks stayed flat. Parks, we brought the parks down. In some areas, how come it went that far down? Oh, capital, capital was the big thing, pretty much. If you look over at their capital, for the most part, it's, to some extent, it's a lot of little things. They need to get some weed whackers. Ryan wanted $5,000, one-time thing that we considered capital for him to be able to do tree trimming in all the parks. He does have some tree trimming budget in the parks, but he says it's just not keeping up with that. He wants to just get 10, or 5,000 more to go through all the parks and get the trees taken care of. We also want to start a savings account for the suspension bridge repainting. It's in bad shape, or not bad shape, it's in dire need of being repainted. And we know it's going to be a substantial amount of money to do it because you're going to have to abide by MPCA guidelines and everything else to be painting a bridge that straddles a river in Minnesota. So, you know, there's already, in the parks budget and your professional services, we had been budgeting for the development of plans and specs to do the bridge. Now, this, this money is basically actually starting to set money aside, not for the engineering, but for the, the actual painting and repairs of the bridge itself. And then in here, we've got another sign that he'll replace. And then one of the requests was to finish, finish the Peterson Park play-in place. If you recall, they got that, that material that they put down in the, you know, instead of P-rock. And there was, there was, then that new equipment, equipment went in there. That material didn't, didn't cover the whole playground area. It was just where the new equipment goes. So they asked for $60,000 to finish that. And I was talking to the park board about that, and, and it's interesting that it, you know, hadn't come to the council prior to the budget talks because what's kind of happening is the P-rock, when kids are playing on that, the P-rock gets basically kicked up onto that, that matting. And when that happens, not only is it going to prematurely wear it, but it gets slippery because then there's, there's a bunch of rocks there and the kids are running around and they'll get on them rocks and it almost acts like a, you know, a rolling surface and, and they can slip right out from underneath them, their feet and hurt themselves. So, so the park board was, was saying that that, that the rest of that stuff should be put down as soon as we possibly can do it. And so one of the things that the Budget Committee talked about was using liquor store funds to do that. One of the liquor store savings accounts, and if you look at your investment sheets, but one of them has a savings amount of about 107,000. And that's a different account from the savings account that I was going to, you know, that you already kind of had committed the bridge, the 50% match we need for the bridge. This is a different savings account. It's got about 107. 60,000 of that could be used to finish this so the kids have a safer playground. Then down at the Olga Barkerwood's property, that, where that trailhead area is, there's still a bunch of trees and tall grass and stuff that needs to be cleared out of there. And there was a request for 6,000 to go in there and clear all that out and get it, and get it cleaned up. They had been taking, at one time, the, I think the first graders or Kate took some kids down there, and they were doing some things as a community service type thing to, to clean some stuff up. But it's to the point that the grass and the vegetation is so overgrown, it's really probably not really safe to have a bunch of kids down there walking around, picking up stuff. You don't know where glasses, whatever else. So they're looking at a request of 6,000 to do that. So one of the things that the committee talked about, if you look at your investment sheet, one of the things on the investment sheet is trailhead funds or city, is city inner trail funds. And as a 2020, that had 60,000 in it. Well, of course, when you start laying sidewalks down or whatever else, it's potentially, it's going to cost some money. So there's 60,000 in that over time savings towards doing that type of thing. And in 2021, there was another 15,000 that was added to that fund. And in 2022, there was another 10,000. And so the thought was, that's going to put that at 85,000. And you can easily use up that money in doing inner-city trails. But one of the things that the committee talked about is, if the council wants to go ahead and fund that 6,000 to get that trailhead all cleaned up, the trees and all that junk out of there, you could use 6,000 or whatever it takes of the city trail fund investments. And what we'd actually do, because Brian would like to accomplish it this fall, what we could possibly do is, the money that's in the budget, that 10 grand towards that, he would just use that this year. And whatever's left over, we potentially just put in the investment. So that's one way we could handle that one. Then you can see, I'm not going to go through them, but I might touch on one, a couple of them, but not in 2023 list. You can see a bunch of attachments and stuff. The one thing that I will point out is fencing for dog park. And nobody's ever basically heard, what, what do you mean, dog park? Nobody's been talking about a dog park. Well, Brian put it on the list because I had asked him one time, because somebody brought it up, but I had asked him, is there enough room up by the water tower to create a dog park? Which seemed to be very popular in a lot of cities. And so he went up there and staked it out, and we were looking at it, and he kind of resized it a little bit. And so he just thought, well, if we need, if we can do a dog park, we need a fence. So he threw it out there. So it's just for, for informational purposes, not in 2023, but it's about 30 grand to put a fence around a dog park. And then also, he wanted to start saving for the Sharon Park paving, which needs to be done. We've been talking about it for a while, to start saving some money towards that, but not in 2023 because of the other things in the budget. And, and it's possible that at some point, that could maybe be added to a pool project, you know, it's kind of a, maybe an alternate to try and do it at that point. And then the only other thing that he had on here was 50,000 to overhaul the bathhouse. The bathhouse is in pretty bad shape. I think if that's not funded, which we're not going to do it in 2023, but at some point, I think we're still going to have to maybe look at getting a plumber in there and doing some updates of fixtures, anyway. So, okay, moving on. Historic City Hall, really no change there. That's, that does show you, though, about what the city does spend for utilities and that type of thing at Historic City Hall. The 24,000 is obviously the, the manning of it by the county. The community center, again, no change. And that just kind of shows you how much, you know, we put into the community center with utilities and all that type of stuff down there. And then, we don't, we don't do anything special because of the national, or the nutrition services being in there, cooking and stuff. It's just electricity and whatnot. So, but other than that, there's nothing more that we do. Economic development, those numbers stayed the same. You know, city puts in 30,000 every year just in case something pops up that you need a little bit of money to do. The contributions to West Central Initiative, Birding Trail. And then the chamber, the city gives 1,500 to act as a kind of promotion of the city since the city can't be chamber members. And then we also do 30,000 for consulting services. In this particular case, it's more geared towards, you know, Bob and the 2024 project or whatever else we might need him for. Other expenses stayed, stayed the same. What we give to the Historical Society, the Reader Board, ambulance service, property taxes for the, the properties that the city owns and rents out. The library, now, the request from the library board was to include an increase in wages for the cost of living adjustments for COLAs. But then also, when we met with Dave Gottenberg and Cheryl Brenner, Dave brought up a, a, what he called an inflation adjustment. And that's, and it was, he kind of, it's too bad Dave didn't come tonight, we could ask him about it. But it was, the idea was that because of inflation and stuff, the cost of shipping stuff and other products have went up. And so he thought, just a one-time adjustment to cover that type of added expense with the idea, we're all hoping that inflation kind of comes back down again and then basically it wouldn't be something you include in the 2024 budget. So we put it in here. You will notice that even though that was put in here, you don't see an adjustment up in the 188,225, which is our typical levy transfer. And even though they asked for a COLA adjustment, that number didn't go up because, and there's more to think about and talk about, but we didn't increase that number at all because when you look at where they have been the last few years, and this is what we explained to Dave and Cheryl, when you look at the last few years, they have come in under budget in wages and benefits. And so when you project where they're going to end up this year, and I know they're trying to hire another staff person, so things might change. But what we kind of thought about was that if they come out over budget in wages and benefits, not due to overtime or comp time, is the way we kind of explained it, then, and they go over budget in those categories, then the city council should look at an adjustment or some type of a, a transfer to cover the wages and benefits. Not only, you know, necessarily, well, I think, again, looking at the projections and the fact that they're, they're staffed less this year than they, they're not fully staffed, according to them guys, but I think they're going to come in under budget. So I don't foresee them going over in budget, in wages and benefits this year. But next year, in 2023, and that's what we're talking about, if, if they hire another staff person to get fully staffed, and at the end of the year, they can show that they came in over budget for wages and benefits, then the city council should consider basically giving it, giving them a transfer to cover that shortage. That's kind of the way we talked about it. So that's why the 188,225 hasn't changed. Again, think about it, think about all this stuff for that matter. Insurance and other charges, I did have to increase that one about 10,000 because just overall insurance for the city and bank charges because people are using their cards and stuff a lot more. I believe that's what those bank charges are for, Danielle. That's just gone up. You look at the history of it, we've been kind of under budgeting there, especially in insurance for a little bit. So I had to tick that up a little bit. And then airport, airport pretty much stays the same. We do have some capital items that we would like to do, and we kind of are considering doing, but they got to get on the CIP Capital Improvement Plan. And I've talked to the state about a couple of things already, but we don't have to add that to the budget because the airport has plenty of savings to take care of anything that we might do out there capital-wise. So the only other thing that I didn't touch on, I'll go back up to revenue, is the special levy. And you'll see that the special levy went down by 50,000. And the reason it went down by 50,000 was because in 2022, we were anticipating that we were going to be doing a pool project. And that pool project was going to, was going to be a tax-abatement bond, and that bond payment was going to be 50 grand at minimum. Well, we know in 2023, because the legislature didn't do anything, and we collected for that bond payment last year, there was no reason to keep that 50,000 in the special levy for the pool because we don't know the status of the state right now. The legislature should not do anything. So there was no reason to put that 50,000 in there again. So there was no reason to put that $50,000 in there again. So that's why the special levy went down. Any questions? Lot of stuff.
Don went through it in less than just about 20 minutes, what took all of us about six hours to go through this all.
And like I said, when you guys take this home and you're looking at it and you're thinking about something, call if you have questions. You don't have to wait till the next meeting, but the idea is to, is to have this on the next agenda. Best case scenario would be the next agenda, we talk about it, we finalize it. So we get all of our ducks in a row and set the budget. And I typically, I know we have to have it to report to the state at the end of the month, but we will be one elected official short at the 27th meeting. So, if we could possibly do it at the 13th meeting, that would be ideal.
Any questions for Don? Steve or Ryan?
Especially as it relates to the capital items, there's a lot of things on this list.
Why, I mean, I don't understand why we, why do they need a new skid steer? Is the other, is the other one usable? Is it?
Well, it's usable, but you know, just like all equipment, you have to replace it after so long. And it's got, it's, it's actually, I think, you know, we put together, a while ago, we put together a equipment replacement schedule on all our equipment. The skid steers go about 10 years. He's got 10 years on it. So, looking at the schedule, the F-250 that he's talking about and the skid steer, the two items that on the schedule should be replaced.
I just, I have an issue with, with that because, I mean, I know my business, our business, we don't have a, we have an equipment budget that, I mean, it, our trucks go until we have to push them or pull them. We don't have a schedule, we don't get a new, you know, we don't get a new truck every 10 years or every five years or every, we don't, I just, I don't, I don't think it's realistic to, to have shiny new F-250s driving down the street that the average taxpayer isn't able to afford to have for their business when, and we get a new one for our guys every five years or every 10 years or whatever. And this, I mean, we do the same thing with our fire trucks, with our police cars. I mean, we have, we don't have a huge community, but we have a top of the line fire department. And those are big, big expenses. And I mean, I, I don't want to, and I know I sound like I'm saying, let's, they can walk around and, I told you, we have a budget in there for more weed whackers. I'll be, Don, I told you, and I'll go on record now. Back in the, I remember seeing previous tree trimming or lawn mowing and trimming crews, you saw them all over the place. The last couple of years, I have not seen those guys mowing or weed whacking. And I'm not saying they're not doing it, but I'm around town a lot more than the average guy all over town, and I don't see them anywhere. So now we're going to buy them new equipment that won't get used, or allegedly won't get used. I just, I have a hard time with all of these little toys and gadgets we're going to start buying that, I get it, they're on the lease schedule, but there's a lot of businesses in town that can't afford a lease schedule, and then they watch their city employees drive by in a brand new 2023 F-250. I just, I think we should. I, I get it, there's a lot, you know, the, the fire trucks need to be fire trucks and the police cars need to be police cars, but I just, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that we need to have this lease schedule that we're tied to and we just commit everything in our budget to when, I mean, if they're still able, if we're able to keep using that skid steer, that's a $55,000 ticket. If they can keep using it, yeah, might not be fancy, might not have air conditioning. I don't have air conditioning in the trucks I use for work.
Does that have a lot of downtime last year?
I don't know.
I mean, we bought them a snow blower. I remember when Brian was here, we want a walk behind snow blower. I've never seen them use a walk behind snow blower. I know last year I sent you pictures of the bridge down there that we bought the snow blower for, piled high with snow, and you couldn't get even to the bridge, let alone across it. So I mean, I just.
Well, that's a different issue then.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but it's something that we needed to buy because we wanted to better the community and it's, it didn't get used that we saw, or that I saw. So I just, I, I question whether we need to be tied to these lease schedules if we have equipment that is functional, that works, and does the job.
Well, like on this particular item, you can see that there are ones that were not, they weren't decided on.
Right.
You guys can decide whether you want to basically swap that equipment out. I would say, you know, stop by and look at them. Talk to Brian, talk to the guys about the Bobcat and the F-250, look at it and see what you think. And, and the reason we put that down there too, was because of the sand salt storage thing. That's a huge, you know, $85,000, that's a huge, huge thing that we thought it was important, we, we need to do something with that sand.
Do we know how big a shop or facility that $85,000 is?
I don't have the spec sheet right in front of me.
So, I was, I mean, I, I'm up, I'm up behind the city shop every other Wednesday, because that's their dumpster day. And I mean, like we have, there's a lot of stuff up there. I mean, if we could, there's a pole that's a brace for an electric pole. If that could be turned parallel to the property line and we get those, I mean, there's a lot of things that could be removed from up there.
Yeah.
I think there, there's plenty of room back there for a building that would house the sand and salt that I've seen up there.
I don't, and I don't think this is any larger than what's needed by the amount of sand and salt that we would order. We would have, that we order and that we would have to store under something. This isn't, this isn't, you know, a huge, huge thing. It's enough to, and it's got to be basically, it's got to be able to guard against runoff and that type of thing too. So, it's what you see, you know, in the cities, other cities, in the counties using, it's the same type of structure.
I know the county, the county at the transfer facility down on 210, out by the airport in Fergus Falls, they've built a new, I struggle calling it a building, it's basically a hoop frame type building, but it has probably
Canvash.
Six to eight foot wall, concrete wall around the bottom, and then it's hoop.
That's what this is.
Basically plastic.
That's what this is.
That's what that is. That's $85,000.
Exactly, $85,000.
Detroit Lakes has the same, or Becker Colony, I should say.
$85,000 today, today, yeah.
And it, I can only speak from the elevator on the 94, which I pass every day, same structure. Replace that three times a year.
Replace the plastic? Well, I know they, they just put the one up at the county down in, in Fergus Falls, and that windstorm last year came through and blew half of it off.
Right. Then it's not usable. It's torn, it's not usable. And it's expensive to replace, so I'm not sure that's the answer for the kind of building either.
So, yeah. So basically, you know, with what's in here right now, we're looking at 18.8% levy increase. So, we've got some big ticket items in here. One of the things that, you know, obviously, this we have to look at, the library's request, the park board wasn't, wasn't too bad. And what they were looking at because of the fact that they're big ticket things that we'd like to accomplish, you know, you could pull out of different investment accounts or liquor store funds to accomplish those as it relates to parks. And so, you know, kind of the street department is probably the big one that you need to think about.
For the parks, for the tree trimming?
Yep.
Tree trim parks, all parks for 5,000?
Yeah.
How often do they do that? So I mean, that's, that's like a one.
Yeah, that's a one and done type thing. And that's one, the reason it's that much is because it's kind of, I don't know if you got a boat from Los Angeles or not, but you know, having them go through, having that hired out a leak company and take care of all the trees in all the parks in the city, we've got quite a few parks, so.
And tree trimming is costly.
Yep.
Period.
They're using buckets and everything else, big equipment.
Some in my backyard that I think if the city would adopt as a park, we could get that taken care of.
All right, good.
Don't you donate land?
And if you think about it, the parks too, you know, their budget last year was almost $32,000 in capital, and we cut that in half to 16. And that includes 5,000 to take care of all the trees. Because they're big ticket items again, we're being, we're using liquor store funds potentially and investment funds to accomplish those other things.
Well, I think that's a liquor store fund, I mean, that's, that's the kind of stuff that in my, my opinion liquor store funds are just, are made for.
Absolutely. That's why we put that, that's why we were talking about it in those terms, those types of things.
I don't think, $5,000, it just, if it was just, $5,000 is just for tree trimming, it's not, that's not even close. If we had.
But he has, he has other funds in there too, for tree trimming, but you know, if he needed to, you know, tap into that a little bit, so, you know, because he's technically in parks and he's got 10 grand.
Right.
With the 5,000, he usually uses to work on trimming trees, and then this additional to go through all, so.
Any other questions? Paul's in Australia.
I agree with most of what Kevin said. I don't know much about fire trucks, but like pushing the snow and driving a F-250 around, that's expensive car to drive a 250 around.
I gotta tell you, I push snow.
Yeah.
Anything less than that F-250, you just as well not push much snow.
I disagree. I've done a lot of, you can do a lot with a half ton. You know, I don't know what you do. I don't know about commercial.
That's what I'm talking about. The city would be commercial. I mean, it would be.
I disagree. Half ton, you could run around town and do a lot, a lot of good before those big monster trucks come out.
You could.
And I've talked to Don.
You'd have to fix it an awful lot more than a.
I disagree.
A 2500.
I disagree. And the Bobcat, you have to drive two miles to get it somewhere like down south end of town. So, that's an expensive thing to drive. I just, and to have, I don't know how many miles they put on a 250, but typically it's one or two people, and it's mostly, you see it driving around mostly. Was it 2% of the time they're plowing? I mean.
Yeah, probably not much. I don't know.
Yeah, so I just, that's a big expense, I think. And it's just a bad image, I think. Doesn't show much restraint on our part.
So the discussion has mainly been around the street park department. I guess it'd be best if we could have individual conversation with Superintendent Olson.
He's heard of everything I've said. He gets real sick of me.
Just as a point of discussion, and I want to see, if you change that number, the
Yep.
If you were to reduce that by, say, 25,000, what does that do to our percent increase?
Well, where do I take the $25,000 from? Because that's the way I change it.
Okay, take it off of, just for discussion, I just want to see what $25 change would do to that. Take it off of the economic development director.
We'll just take it, we'll just reduce this for the sake of discussion, we'll reduce it there. So $25,000 reduces the levy to, to almost 16%?
To 2%, roughly.
About 2%, okay.
So, you know, for that matter, I think you'd be able to just say, for every $25,000, you're going to reduce it by 2%.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you're going to get this thing down to, what are you comfortable with? 10%, 8%? You've got a lot of $25,000 to remove. So, part of the discussion is, has to be, again, with all the things that we have in here, and if you start prioritizing and thinking about what, what do we, what do we have to do? Part of that discussion's got to be economic development director. It just does. I know the community wants it. And, and it's one of those things that we've talked about, that it would basically, over time, would pay for itself. But if you take that out alone, you're down to 6.5%.
Yeah, it's almost 3% on its own.
Yeah. So, you can't do it all.
So the question I want to ask the council is knowing what Don does as his duties, what of that are you willing to eliminate? Because in every conversation we've had about the economic development director, we've always said, that person is not going to be in an office. They're going to be out pounding the streets, they're going to be out hitting trade shows, you're going to be out doing stuff. So how many hours a week are we willing to not have a city administrator in the office so that they can do the economic director job? Because there's a trade-off. Because if we're going to have a combined position, part of that combined position is the economic development director. So, we have to think of what things that Don does now, we're willing to not have done so that that person can be out of the office.
I don't.
Because that's the trade-off.
I, yeah, well, that's well said that way. Because I, I don't believe that one person can effectively do both jobs. I just don't.
We, we have accomplished things effectively, but not as effectively as people would like to see them done.
Well, I believe when we talked about, you know, if this new administrator could do some economic, but I think it was more the administrative work that Don probably does now, if it wasn't hitting the streets or going to trades.
So then we're not having an economic development director?
No, I didn't say that.
You would be.
You, you'd need, you'd need one.
I think he said is, Don's doing now administratively what an economic developer could do, taking a portion of Don's plate away, even though he won't be here to enjoy it.
Really, really at the end of the day, however you guys want the budget to shake out, if you want that, if that's going to stay in there, then, you know, as soon as this budget is set, I think we need to post that job.
Yeah, we can't, we can't just include it in the budget and not do anything.
We need to post it and we need to get somebody here.
Well, we did that last year, we included it in the budget and just left it. But, yeah, you're, I mean, you're right. I, I agree. We should, this is something that we've, we've kept down the road for a few years now, but I just, I, I agree. I don't think one person, regardless of how much vim and vigor they have, is able to be successful at both a city administrator and a economic developer job.
Judy Tabit.
Yeah, Judy Tabit. Emily Reno from the Local Foods, Local Places writes grants. And she is telling me, there is so much money out there right now for grant writing that I believe would fit into some of the things, especially the parks and some of the other things that would fit in. And even if she would write some grants, that would be, you know, another, and you need an economic development person, but she had, she showed me all kinds of things. I met with her for a few hours last week. There's lots of grants out, and cities qualify for them, not other people. Okay? Nonprofits and cities qualify for lots of grants.
Lots, lots of cities do employ a grant writer for that reason.
Yes. And Emily is one that does the, that's what she did at West Central Initiative. She has now left West Central Initiative. So she is on her own right now.
She's on her own, and I think, is that what she's doing? Grant writing and economic development type stuff for a fee? And, and the city.
And, and the city used to do that, um, they had somebody that they, they hired to do that and they paid tens of thousands of dollars to and they weren't that effective on getting grants. Not to say that that wouldn't be an option, but in that, in fact, that is a possibility is say, okay, can we be effective that way by taking some money, maybe not a hundred and five thousand dollars, but taking something of this, putting it down in that economic development, thirty thousand, add to that, beef it up to ninety, you know, whatever. Add sixty more thousand to that and try with being really focused on hiring a person to write grants, to do economic development that way instead of having a staff person do it.
But that would be an administrative position. It wouldn't be a person that hits the road.
It would be more somebody that basically if, if, like for instance, let's, let's use Emily as an example. If she knows, you know, here's what the city's trying to do. Or you, if the city, knowing what we want to try and do, find somebody to basically work on that and hire them to work on it for us, like we do engineers. So if there's something that the park, the park's trying to do, um, that, that's, you know, whatever it might be, it might be a matter of talking to somebody like Emily and saying, do you know where there's a grant for this? Can you do, can you write a grant for it? Try and do it that way. I mean, that's what the city used to do. So that's an option.
That's totally, not totally different, but different than an Economic Development Director.
Right, because you'd be, you'd be finding, thinking about, constantly thinking about economic development things and how to do them, but not spending a hundred and five thousand, have somebody here forty hours a week doing it, but being more specific and then throwing money from economic development funds to try and accomplish that through grant writing, through whatever. So that's an option. So think about that. Cause I mean, this, this number could then go down, but you're just shifting some of that to another category, economic development.
What, what do you think about that?
I don't know.
Grants are a wonderful thing.
And they're hard to.
But you can ask the pooled committee about sure things for grants.
They're very competitive.
Because, I mean, and, yeah, but you need, I think you need somebody. So then, you know, so then the next question is, how many hours a week do we want the city administrator to spend looking at available grants? And then present those grants to the council so that we can hire a grant writer, so that we can apply for potentially, and of the grants that we've applied for, do we receive half of them? Just in general, do you think? I mean, do we, what's our, what's our success rate for grants?
Actually, it's been quite good lately. Well, the grants that we got when we did the small cities thing, which we didn't use the grant writer for, because they had tried several times and didn't get anything. So, um, it's still a grant, or I wouldn't say it's a grant. It's more of an application in that sense. And so I ended up just working with HRA and we got both of those. Actually, I think we got three of them. We got two and then we got an extension. The grant for the pool, I gotta say, the pool was more of an application or a grant from the state. And I think that was successful. The only way it fell short was that the legislature decided not to do a binding.
We didn't get the money?
Well, true, but, but, but not for the reason it was not on the list and going to be funded because we truly believe.
With that grant, there was hoops we had to jump through.
Well, there's always hoops.
There's always.
Yeah, when you're taking, taking free money, you gotta do things.
But guys, if you have, have an Economic Development Director, he's going to be doing the same thing. He's going to be applying and working on the same grants that you may or may not get.
But just, just because there's all this free money out there, I don't, I don't know where it's at.
It's, it's.
Just because it's out there doesn't mean it applies to stuff we want.
You know, I would have thought that there was a lot of free money out there that Pelican was really, really eligible for because of our ethnic diversity. And, and that's what we, that's what we always hear. And we're an opportunity zone. We use those same things to write for a grant, to write a grant for the pool, whatever it was, the targeted grant that was supposed to be so perfect for us that we were surely going to get it and we did not. Our whole attitude towards that whole concept of we're, we're so diverse and there's money out there that just come rolling our way, that's bogus.
If we were in the metro area, we probably would have gotten that grant.
Well, that's, that's where, well, supposedly, supposedly half was supposed to be down there and half was supposed to be out in, in, in greater Minnesota. But we were so fit for that grant, but didn't get it. It's, it's a game.
I'll just, I'll just leave that with this. I used to teach economics. And in economics, there's a thing called an opportunity cost. An opportunity cost is whatever it costs you to get something. So if I have five dollars and if I want to buy a pop, but I also want to buy a sandwich, my opportunity cost is whatever I don't buy. So our opportunity cost for this position, what do we, what are we willing to give up? What are we willing, what are we willing to pay for the administrator to not do the administrative duties so that they can shift into economic development mode? What, there, there's, there's going to be some things that have to give.
But that's only if we cut.
If we cut the position. So I mean, I, I think it's important that we keep in some form, maybe it's not a full-time position, maybe it's a part-time position, maybe it's, I, I don't have those answers, but I, I don't, I struggle with the idea of, of combining the two positions because I just, I think it's not practical. Or I think whoever takes that position, man, woman or child, will be frustrated and burned out in a year and will be in the same boat looking for both.
What, what, what do you guys think about, this is just throwing this out there. If you didn't do that this year, and then when you, when you see the candidates, this is more of a question. You see the candidates for, for the city administrator position and you find that, even though you've taken this out, that none of them candidates are going to fit what we were kind of hoping might be there, where they can, you know, they've got some background in that. And then have to turn around in 2023 for the 2024 budget, look at hiring an economic development as director. So you're just kicking the can down the road a year.
Again.
Yeah, again.
For the third time. How often are we willing to do that?
Yeah.
Why don't we look for an economic development? Why don't we post the economic development position and see what kind of candidates we get for a city administrator? That's the same thing, just.
But you already hired somebody to find you on as well.
So what's the likelihood of our 2024 budget having a eighteen, nineteen percent levy?
Your 2024 budget.
Maybe it will be an easier bill to swallow in 2024.
I know. If, if you're going to budget an economic development director, because you have one, you're adding a hundred, and, and, and like I've always said, I don't know if you're going to get one for a hundred and five thousand, but you're going to, if you hire one, you're going to have that hundred thousand in there every year. On top of the other things that you're going to need to consider doing. So there, you know.
Would it, and again, not have no answers. And I can see the conflict, but would it work to, to share the position with another city? And I get, I get it. Say Barnesville. Well, you're going to have two cities competing for the same, but Barnesville has things to offer that Pelican doesn't have. Pelican has things to offer that Barnesville doesn't have. So one position could feasibly work between the two that would, you know, if I have, Steve has a business and oh, you know, you'd probably fit better in Pelican rather than Barnesville or vice versa, and they could work that angle.
Would it work then?
Would it work to share?
Thinking about that, would it work then? I know we used Emily as a, uh, example. Let's just say, I don't know what she does for a living now, if she's a consultant or what she is, but would it? It wouldn't be any different than hiring Bob Engineering to have a consultant economic developer hired that isn't a city employee. We just pay them when we have them looking for grants and working for us. And if you got it, you know.
You know, that's, that's kind of what.
Do we have Bob on a, I mean, are they on a retainer type, like a lawyer?
He just, they just know so much of the background of Pelican that it just makes sense to, to keep using them because if you hire another engineering firm, they have to start all over from scratch on, on, okay, city, now give us all your infrastructure documentation. We don't have to do that. We save tons of time with, with Apex because they're so, so familiar with us. And that's, that's kind of what I was going to say was, when we were, when the city basically used a economic development person consultant in the same manner that you use the engineering. What I don't know, because I wasn't at the city, it was a very short time after I started that I just did not see, I, I, and because of the, the fact that we didn't get a couple of, of the small city grants for a number of years, we didn't get them and we weren't successful in using it that, or trying that way. I don't know if the individual consultant knew everything about the city and basically could just on, on their own start, you know, work on stuff and just kind of pay as a part-time type thing or a consultant type thing, or they, they see an opportunity, so they came to the city council and said, hey, I see an opportunity. Can I do this for you? You know, for a fee? I don't know if they were that familiar with the city that that's the way it worked, or if it was the city figuring out what they want and then reaching out to the consultant and saying, hey, we're thinking this, can you do this for us? Because if you could find somebody that really is familiar with Pelican and what Pelican's trying to do and what Pelican could use, and then somebody that basically comes to the city council proactively and says, hey, guys, I think I can help you here. You know, here's my, here's my idea. You know, um, what do you think about me doing this work for you? That would be a nice way of doing it because then somebody at the city is not constantly thinking about, you know, then you're back to somebody at the city thinking about the economic development thing and reaching out to a consultant. It'd be nice if the consultant.
Totally different position.
Pardon?
That's totally a different position than, than an economic development director.
Well, the director is somebody that basically, well, in, in a sense of yes, because part of the economic development director's function was that communication with the small business, with our business community, you know, uh, interaction with the, not only the council, but also the, the chamber and, and, you know, EDC and, you know, just everything economic development in Pelican Rapids, where a consultant's just going to work on what you basically throw at it. So, you know, as we're thinking about all this, if, if, if you want to hire an economic development, if that's the road that you want to go down, um, I think you got to do it. But there's a lot of stuff in this budget that's got to go out because we can't, unless you want to do an eighteen point eight percent increase. So think about all that stuff. If that's one thing that's definitely for sure got to stay in here because you can't find the, because you can find the, the dropping this thing down by ten points, um, through other means, then let's get there and let's get this thing posted and see if we can't get somebody in here before I'm gone. But like I said, you may post it and not find somebody you're happy with either. John?
Which do you hire first? The, the city administrator who has to work with the economic development person that you've got? Or do you hire the economic development person first? So, you know, how do you decide which one do you hire first? Cause you've got, if you're going to hire both of them.
He's leaving in three months.
Yeah, he's.
That's number one.
Yeah.
He's the administrator of the city.
Is he saying you should hire the economic, just go out and post the job, but do you want to wait until after you've gotten somebody? Then you can say, okay, we've got our city administrator, because you never know, what you budgeted for the city administrator might not be enough to get a good candidate.
Well, they're already out going down that road. I mean, they're, they're, they're in the process of, of looking for, you know, hiring a city administrator.
But do you want to wait until after you've gotten that person in place before you think about the economic development?
I think that would happen. I think that would happen. We just have to decide now to ratify the budget.
Yeah.
Going to go down that road. It'll be after.
After you've got that.
Right, right. But it needs to be in the budget so we're able to move forward after we have a different city administrator.
Cause you'll know based on the timeline that David Groan threw out there, that you would know the strength of the candidates. If you're interested in one of them candidates, I'm guessing you'd know that in October. If they're, if they're slated to start beginning of, end of November, beginning of December, they got to give a thirty day notice, you know, once they've accepted a job offer. So you'll know that in October. Then you could turn around potentially and look at hiring, I don't know if you want to have two new though, to have a new, new city administrator and a new economic development director starting right at pretty much the same time, might be kind of tough, but maybe not. My thought was, once you know what you're getting for city administrator, get that economic development position posted and hired potentially too. Any more discussion, John?
No.
Well, we have to go back to this budget and we have to figure out where we're going to let this sit, if it's going to be eighteen point eight percent or we're going to get it down to two percent or eight percent or ten percent or whatever. But we have to think about that, where we're going to.
And the two, the two big budget items are the Economic Development Director and the Salt Shed. Those are the two biggies.
Right, and, and, boy, no. One, the MPCA really doesn't care about, the other one they do. Okay, any more discussion? Councilman Foster? Okay, well, hope to approve this at our next city council. Item number fourteen, administrator board, John.
Well, since the last meeting, um, we looked at the clerk to set all this, put, put all this together. I worked with Lake County Service Co-op to, we, we bought, aside from the laptops, we also bought budgeted computers for the, the police department. And so setting all those up, getting them all talking, the network and everything. I met with the pool committee to test, to discuss the state of the pool. And one of the things that they're kind of looking at is reaching out to the architect for proposal to maybe reconfigure things a little bit. Hopefully the council will hear some stuff on that for too long. Obviously working on a twenty-three, twenty-two three budget and meeting with the budget committee. I met with Superintendent Brian Court from the school to discuss the parking, uh, this ice rink location and also the warming house. And, um, they've got some ideas that potentially they would be coming to the city council and talk to about the city participating and potentially a plan that they've got to, um, expand the facility at the football field maybe. And, uh, I don't know how public this is, but it is now, I guess. Expand a facility at the football field, um, without throwing necessarily any more money out there. And the city, uh, kind of using part of that facility for a warming house, which would be, it's a really good idea, but we'll see. I met with Minco Construction. If you recall, they were the contractor on the city hall building. And they had a bunch of punch list items and they've got new ownership and this guy really, um, really wants to get things taken care of. He's been great to work with so far. All the punch list items are done that were left over, um, except for one light on the outside of the building, which when the electrician came and swapped out all the lights, I don't know if you ever noticed that night, but there was two lights on this side and the south light that weren't working. And electrician came, replaced them with new lights and between the time that, and they were all working, between the time that he had done that and, uh, uh, Minco Construction came back to go through the punch list items, that one light on the south side went out again. So he got ahold of the guy that day when we saw it wasn't working and told the electrician, order another one. Let's get it in here. So. So they're doing really well to try and wrap this up. We want to get this last pay request and it gets this project closed out by the end of the year.
Yes, we can sell the building.
What?
I'm sorry.
Okay. I met with a new homeowner, Brian, Street Superintendent Brian Olson to discuss some utilities and kind of get some details worked out on a new home that's going up. Tended the special. Attended the special close city council meeting. I met with Dan Aggie and, and went through the, the Aggie lot split request, sent that stuff to the planning commission, and then attended the planning commission meeting last night, my report.
Questions for Don?
Thank you.
Item number 15, Mayor Report, few items in the last couple of weeks. August 17th, attended the Local Foods Local Places Steering Committee meeting regarding commercial kitchen in Pelican Rapids. 18th of August, attended a general budget meeting with Councilman Foster, Administrator Solga, and then also on the 19th is a light meeting plus a meeting with the library board members, a member of David Gottenbarger and Cheryl Brenner regarding their budget. August 19th, telephone conversation with Commissioner Wayne Johnson regarding our proposed moratorium on sale of empty ride food and beverages, which we passed this evening. Attended the Pelican Feet Project bid opening with Superintendent Olson and Wes Keller of Houston Engineering. Then again, on August 25th, attended a general budget meeting with Councilman Foster and Administrator Solga. I had a call to Daniel Marks of Mesar regarding a future PFOS sampling agreement with MPCA, which we like, will be going to agreement. And then Councilman Foster, Administrator Solga, and members from People's Service and I had a, a meeting regarding that and what the cost of PFOS sampling, the frequency, and it's something we're going to have to do in the future, even though we do not see PFOS in our effluent, which we discharge to the Pelican River. But if we show no PFOS, then it won't be included in our permit. But if there, if we don't do this, it may be included in our permit and it'll cost us more money down the road. August 25th, attended a special city council meeting here. August 26th, attended the Mahabwee Open House for Childcare, the lower unit of the former Good Samaritan Building, a riverfront on Main. They're in, they're in need of a, somebody to lead that facility. The gal they had working there, she went on to another job, so they're not accepting children at this point. That was as of last week, because they're in need of a manager at that site. I met yesterday, attended a, a meeting with Don Administrator Solga to review the agenda for this evening's meeting. Any questions?
Here, I, the, the trail meeting Thursday? I don't know anything about it. Like, who's, who's running it?
Yeah, that's tomorrow night at, oh, excuse me. Third day, August, September 1st, 5:00 PM, Pelican Rapids High School. Come and be part of discussion on future trails within the city of Pelican Rapids, future trails between Pelican Rapids and neighboring communities and destinations. Also discussion on Trail Hip for Heart of the Lakes Trail. That's a new trail from Pelican Rapids to Purim. Pelican River Boardwalk, Riverwalk discussion, and also Pelican River canoe and kayak access. And I, Dot is, who's emceeing that meeting?
Apex Engineering.
Apex, okay.
Higher, higher to lead the Trail Committee, Pelican Trail Committee, have that public information and public opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no other, Councilman Strad, motion to adjourn?
Wait a second. Did we take care of Aggie's lot request?
Yep.
Okay. That was a while ago.
Motion to sub call in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's the same.